Hi, I'm Emily here from the trustees. And Deborah's here with me as well, and she can jump in to make some more information. You know, we're really hoping to do monthly updates from now on for the renovations. So this is in an effort to provide monthly update. And then also, I just want to make sure that everybody knows who's listening, watching, here, that our meetings are always open to the public, and they're once a month, and they're on the second Wednesday of the month at 5:30 at the library. Open, it's a great opportunity to ask questions about the renovations, share opinions about things, find out more. There is also more information about building plans on the library website and at the library. Lots of information out there. So I'm gonna read some of the updates for where we're at right now in June. The contract for Phase One renovations has been signed with Milestone Engineering and Construction, and they are actively working to buy off the slip contractors and securing resources such as sheet rock, insulation, building supplies, and things like that. The Phase One renovations that are included in this contract are for the schoolhouse portion of the library, which I already shared, but just to refresh your minds. They include electrical updates, so a new panel, rewiring where required by code in the schoolhouse portion, and hopefully some of the other portions of the main building. Exterior work to, oh, and also exterior work to bury the lines and relocate the meter. And that's something I'm gonna come back to a little bit further on in this update. But other things included in the Phase One renovations are also the removal of interior hazardous materials, and then replacement of all the things that are gonna be affected in that removal, so replacement of sheet rock, and then replacement of insulation in the attic, and re-insulating the side walls underneath the sheet rock. Reconfiguring the computer closet, which is a small closet in the corner of the schoolhouse to make that space more usable, putting in an ADA compliant bathroom, and redoing the craft sink area in one corner to make that ADA compliant. Resurfacing the wood floor, which I'm sure most people who have been in the library have seen the current state of that, needing some little bit of care there. But luckily, we can resurface that if we won't have to put any new carpet. We can just use the flooring that's there. The Phase One will also include reinforcing the flooring in the schoolhouse portion to allow for more shelving to be used in the schoolhouse part of the building, installing LED lighting, and then finally, working on the HVAC system, which will include insulating the ducts and replacement of the air conditioning components. The first work to be done in Phase One will probably start, hopefully, in August, and that first work would focus on electrical updates, and so that's what I'm kinda talking about tonight in preparation for August. The electrical updates improves the electrical inside the building, but the main thing that they're gonna start with is moving the wires on the outside of the building to a corner box, a new meter, and then burying the wires, connecting them to the main line. And so I'd be interested in your feedback on that, or ideas, what you might be wondering about, about any of that. We do have a meeting scheduled with Milestone and the electrical contractor, which is Longchamp, on this coming Thursday, and we invited the Department of Public Works to be a part of that meeting, and so somebody, I don't know exactly who's gonna be at that meeting, but I know that somebody's gonna be at that meeting.
Steve or the town?
Or whoever he does it in.
Also, Bill or Karen, one of them will definitely be there.
Did they just happen to give you an idea why they're doing that, just so we know?
There's a few reasons. I mean, one is to just kinda take all the electrical and upgrade it all. It will also make it easier for us to redo the outside, obviously, because the wires won't be there, clean it up, and centralize it to this corner box.
So they're burying them from where to where?
Building to the main pole. But as to which main pole, I'm not exactly sure, so I'll be at the meeting on Thursday.
I can tell you that the pole there behind the annex is gonna be replaced with a proper, that apparently doesn't need any code, and Eversource has been out to look at it, and so they're putting it in.
Yeah, so Eversource is also being consulted.
So they're not digging up any of the parking lot area, that's all?
Sorry.
So just be aware that when we're looking at doing Phase Two, Three, whatever it's called, that particular section between those two buildings, that's where the septic system is supposed to be aligned, so just be aware of that.
Sure. Yeah, and I think it was brought up that there are also likely propane lines there, and so all of that's gonna have to be discussed.
There's also a water line there, too, to go lower the center. But the Public Works people should be able to tell you where the lines are right now, but...
You can call Dixie and they can tell you.
Who?
411 Dixie.
Yeah.
I don't think they'll know where the water line is.
Maybe that's water, they don't know where everything else is.
Randy Stevens will. Yes, Lauren will know, too. Peter Hoyt will know as well, but...
Yeah, so the meeting on Thursday will be important to kinda get more of a view on what that's gonna look like, and have everybody kinda come together to talk about that. But that would be the first part of this project, and it would likely start in August. The other parts of Phase One in force will more likely start in October. So this would be kind of the first thing. Kind of on the money side of things, the trustees are continuing to work on securing more grants and awards to incorporate into Phase One, and what we hope will be Phase Two, which will focus on the remainder of the building. I'd like to note that $137,000 of Phase One is through fundraising. So that is a really substantial amount of money that's been fundraised over a long period of time. Katrinka and Annie are on the fundraising committee, and they continue with efforts for Phase Two. And additionally, we're working with the Energy Comish- Committee?
Commission.
Commission, to find possible reimbursement for insulation costs. And insulation was always gonna be a part of this project, so it is part of the project. It would just be to recoup some of that cost.
Are they eligible for getting any assistance from the provider for changing their lights to efficient?
Oh, we got a grant, actually, for the LED.
Okay, good.
Yeah, $15,000.
That's great. One of the challenges we've been finding is that libraries are kinda stuck in a weird place, because they're not like as much municipalities, same way others are, and they're not officially a nonprofit, but I was looking into Wolf Throw, and I think that they use their nonprofit group to raise money.
Yes, foundation.
If you agree, and that's, right, so you're on that.
Yes, we are.
Because I think that there's gonna be some new funding coming very soon that's focused just on nonprofit. There was just something announced last weekend, and there's some more funding, so hopefully that will start to, they started with municipalities, I think they're gonna move that one, so maybe that can be helpful down there.
Yeah, nice. I mean, I think one reason to be hopeful about fundraising is also that we are starting with projects that are not maybe as inclined to people donating. I mean, they are not exciting things.
Nope.
You know, they're reinforcing the floor, their HVAC work, and you know, people, you know, it's not like you have a memorial HVAC system.
No, you might, but it'd be very rare.
You could have somebody who's really into that and happy to accept that money for that. But a lot of the things that we've left are more the aesthetic things that people might be more apt to donate to. Also, we hope that when people are aware that we are actually moving forward with this project, that they will see some progress and also feel like they could contribute, because it has been a really long time, and there hasn't been anything done. So there's reason to be hopeful about fundraising efforts and grants and money in addition to what's already been raised. Yeah, and I guess that's pretty much it for our update right now.
Yeah. Do you have any questions?
What are you doing with all the stuff that's in the schoolhouse? Are you just rearranging it, or what are you doing?
Well, yes.
Yes, okay.
I mean, right now, we'll still be using the other parts and the basement in the main building, so I'm guessing we'll probably have to use that for a lot of some things, and some things will likely have to come out of circulation for a short period of time, too. Not necessarily, I don't know, I can't speak for Haley in terms of what out of circulation means, because that might just mean you have to request it, as opposed to like going to the shelf to get it.
So the computers and stuff will be moved to someplace else?
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
Rebecca, sorry, did you take off the mute for a second?
No.
All right, we're gonna go on to our regular business.
Sure. I don't have a lot this evening. I have the town office building RFP and timeline on here. I don't have an approved RFP to present to you yet, and I expect to have one very shortly for your review and comment. I would envision the end of August deadline for that process. The one concern I have as I go into this, there is not a tremendous, a lot of interest among construction companies right now. I think the two that we talked to will respond. I'm not sure what we'll see beyond that, but I just wanna throw that out there as a caution before we get going.
Where is it now? Where are the RFPs now? Are they at legal, where are they?
I have not submitted them to legal yet. I have the two that you requested, one for Clerk of the Works and one for the building that are pretty much put together, and I haven't talked with Neil me about them, and I think I'm gonna submit them. As far as encumbrances, this doesn't really require board action, but I wanted to give you an idea of what we have. We're not encumbering much. The Highway Department would like to encumber two items that they have under contract, that is the paving line, there's about $4,000 left in that line. Obviously, they're still doing a little finish-up work, so we wanna encumber that. We also have a contract with Earth, Pittsfield, New Hampshire, for sand, for winter sand. We've got about $3,300 left there that could be encumbered due to the contract. Police chief has spoken to the board about the Motorola body cams that he's interested in pursuing. He's already started that pursuit. We've got a $29,000 grant, requires a match of about $30,000 to go along with that, and he wants to encumber those funds from his budget. He does have a contract in place and a grant paperwork. The same for his NeoGov software subscription, that's $7,700, needs to be paid. He's got a contract and the money he'd like to encumber that. And the Kalia accreditation fees, that's a two-part fee that is just about $14,000, and he would like to encumber $13,975 and move it towards paying those accreditation fees. The Rec Commission has a contract for fireworks, and they would like to encumber $1,500 of their budget to put towards the fireworks. The overall fireworks contract is $9,000, so got some other work to do, but... And those were the encumbrances that had come forward that had contractual ability to be encumbered.
And none of those are gonna put the chief over budget?
No. She's gonna be fine. Under miscellaneous, I did discuss the conservation grant, the $6,700, with Town Council. They had no concern at all about accepting that, despite the fact that it mentioned 501(c)(3), and saw that as cautionary to anyone that was 501(c)(3), just making them aware that if they lost that status, that they would have to return the money. But they didn't see any reason the town could not accept that grant or the Conservation Commission. So included that.
So are they gonna accept it, or are we gonna accept it?
It is in the consent agenda this evening for you to accept it. It would be appropriate for the board to accept it. That is from the economy agenda. I don't know that I had discussed this with the board, but over a year ago, there were some mistakes made in retirement filing with the state retirement system. Working with MRI, we have managed to get all of the fees dismissed, so, which is sizable, because that was approaching $2,500 that we would've had to pay. So I received a notification today that the three of them have been waived on our behalf. The other thing I wanted to ask the board was, I spoke with, who is Claire from Revision today. Don't know if there's a time when the board could get together to just sort of do a ribbon cutting or that sort of thing for the Revision solar array. They have not put the final, the metal roof they ordered to over the junction boxes has not arrived yet. They expected any time, and that might be a opportune moment. But I don't know if there's a better afternoon for select people that are working.
That's you. Do you have a better afternoon?
It depends, when these boxes come in, so...
I can contact the board when they give me a Friday.
Yeah, if you could give us a couple, two options, maybe I'll agree. Do we know what happened on Thursday, where the solar just completely? Yes?
We do not, or at least I do not.
Good. Every other day seems great, producing times of solar, just obviously there's a couple...
Actually, I think I do know what happened. Because the roof was not over the junction boxes yet, and we'd had heavy rain, the junction boxes had been collecting water. I actually called Ian at Revision, and he sent a team out. They shut things down to make sure there was no water buildup that was affecting anything in there.
Safety, great.
Memory is getting...
It wasn't like weird, yeah, it wasn't like a weird thing that, I saw it, I'm like, I hope not, it broke, but it came back, so, okay, great.
No, it was shut down intentionally for water.
It's been a very sad, slow day today.
It hasn't been a great spring for solar.
Yes, true.
It's done well, yes, well, it is. Do you have any questions about any of that, Rebecca?
No, no, not gonna be.
Great.
I did see Rebecca this morning, she came in and went through the manifest.
Thank you, Rebecca, I so appreciate it.
And just one other miscellaneous thing I could mention while the library trustees are here. I talked with Mr. Bullock and Mr. Devonish today, who said that Judy had made good progress in moving things out of the storage area, and I know they were happy, so...
Thank you.
Anything from Connor?
No.
We're just gonna show up in the library one day.
I think he had made it pretty clear that we couldn't just show up and bother them if you wanted. And again, if there's a good afternoon for you, they are closed on Friday for the day, although Connor's, I know he's in for at least half a day.
That would be the, I could go.
Well, let me see if he's, afternoon I'm assuming will be better than morning.
Yeah, it's afternoon, yeah.
Okay. Let me see if he's available Friday afternoon. He might be willing to say.
All right, are we ready to move on to consent agendas? Yes, great. I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Any discussion? Okay. Rebecca, to you.
I have no concerns.
No concerns, great. Great, so Rebecca votes yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Signatures.
Now, we are moving on to new business, there's those apparently.
I don't have any new business. Well, under old business, I don't know, I can't remember whether you were copying on this, but we did receive some information about the Lambrey River pollution situation from the Advisory Committee. Unfortunately, what it focused on was the problem in Newmarket, which Newmarket has been pretty open about, but not necessarily an effect on drinking water, because it's below the dam, but Newmarket is pumping raw sewage directly into the river below the dam, Water Street in Newmarket, and apparently have been since 2021, and Lambrey is trying to put a little more pressure on DES and some other agencies to see if they can work with Newmarket to get that cleaned up.
Yes, fecal matter, don't go swimming down there.
No, and unfortunately, it is right by the kayak launch, too. In fact, they mentioned in the letter that you can visually observe the sewage bubbling out of the pipe.
How excited.
So why did you do that now?
Yeah, so we are on that, we're working on that, Lambrey River is working on that, everyone's trying to figure out how to make our stuff be included. And then, I apologize, I went to an old, I went to a new, but I skipped old, so. Cost benefit analysis, are you new there?
No.
Those are really open places, for those things that we can't forget during the year.
I have a bond payment calculator that can play with it.
Okay, that's fun.
I have looked at, you know, what we're paying for rent versus what a bond might be.
Okay, I'm guessing the math still works out in the favor of building something.
It's pretty even, when you take the potential rent increases if you go out more than 20 years.
Does it include that you then own something at the end, though? That's where I feel like the even stops being even, because like, what is, yes, the payments have to be supplied, but what is like, now you're done, and you don't have to be anything, and everyone's, you still have to keep it. Yes. All right, any other business? All right, I move to enter into non-public session NHRS A91-8, number two as well, oh, yeah, now that we're seeing, so anything else?
Yeah, and that would be fun. Actually, probably mention A as well.
And A.
Is that it? You're in the room, you're not public real now.
Yeah, I'm an adventure. Thank you.
So trustees are trust fund today this afternoon, and I had not responded to Andy. The information that we got from legal is a sort of okay answer to the wrong question, so it's completely irrelevant.
Understood, understood.
And so in order to encumber those funds, it does have to be in a legally enforceable obligation. And so, reading from our draft of our minutes this afternoon, for the Library Caval Reserve Fund, if a rain runs from the fiscal year 2022 warrant, ought to be encumbered into a fiscal year 2024 by a legally enforceable obligation, the trustees of trust funds determine that they must be provided evidence of their obligation for the end of this fiscal year. So if you give us a copy of whatever documentation that shows that you signed a contract for X amount, and...
Do you just want copies of the encumbrances?
Just a copy of the contract or contracts. Yes, has to be signed. And then, then we would have the documentation that shows that we are properly paying for the maximum of the $100,000 total, or whatever the contract is, whichever is the one. So it would just be the amount, which is around $39,000.
Right, right, well, it's okay to show the full amount.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, yeah. So that would mean that on that contract, 39, it's 39, change, $39,000 would come out of, under that, under the fiscal year 2022 appropriation, that $39,000 would come out there, plus the results of the $35,000.
That'd be just good, yeah.
Which is for this, for this year next week.
Right, next week, right, exactly.
But that, but that one, we have the documentation, because it's just that they have the ballot, the approved ballot.
I will definitely say that we have, yeah, thank you very much. I was thinking myself, as I saw you, I better send that email, what's going on, so this would be even better.
I need to, I don't know how, what happened between Andy and the lawyer, so how we ended up with an answer to the wrong question. It's an answer to the question of what happens when, for a Cal Reserve Fund, an agent is named, so that name of the agent, that never expires until the legislative party votes to do something different. So more than half the funds, the select board is the agent to expand.
Oh, right, which is the other one.
And so in that case, the select board can spend, you know, vote for a little bit this year, and more next year, and keep on doing it until money runs out. And that does not, doesn't ever expire until there's some action by the legislative party, the voters, either vote to take that authorization away, or do a change of purpose with that fund. If you do a change of purpose, that effectively is like a new fund, and so unless you rename the agent, you lose that authorization.
But you can rename the same agent.
Oh, yeah, that happened by mistake with the front pawns and cisterns. Yeah, so, so they, it's originally written, it wouldn't cover new, which was just to uncover a replacement of existing, so they added that they could use it to put in new, but they forgot to rename the select board as the agent to expand, so then they had to do it again next year.
Oh, they had to wait a full year?
Yeah, because it, because it has to be voted on, and it wasn't there in the warrant, but once it's voted on, that doesn't exist.
But no, that's absolutely fantastic, thank you.
Oh, yeah, and you did approve all the expenses this year, you know, that...
Oh, oh, yes.
From the Cal Reserve.
Yes. I just, I was trying to happen after.
There was approved condition, because there was one piece of documentation that you received.
And you can find the invoice, and I got it from?
No, we got all the invoices, there was a copy of a check, so we don't have a check and a date.
Doesn't mean it's the one.
It has nothing to do with you.
Oh, okay, because there was one, we, we, you were missing an invoice, and I chased that down.
Yeah, we got, there was one that was very different.
Oh.
Yeah, the look of it.
It was still the A and P one, I don't know, I don't know.
Oh, no, it was, it was, it was the correct invoice.
Right, right.
It just was obviously not from the original, from the original piece of paper.
Yeah, that's very different, yeah. I haven't posted that up for us.
No, it was, it was just that when we get, yeah, one of the documentation, we're also supposed to get approval of what check paid it, the unit was paid, and we didn't get that. So in our approval today, I have those approved condition, so I have to get the check number and check.
But for a different, but not for the library.
She looks nervous.
No, I just, I just wind up, I need to know anymore.
It is for the library, but it has nothing to do with you.
Because we gave the invoice over, they were to pay it.
They've got all the invoices, they paid it.
So they didn't do your thing, or do your bookkeeping.
They just didn't tell us what check number, what check paid it.
Understood, understood.
And I'm sure she knows what check paid it, but...
Just not so many, first of all. Was there eight, something like that? I can't remember exactly, but it's... Brownie, yeah, it's not so many, yeah, exactly.
So there was a highway one also where we didn't get the check number. It's just a detail, so we say, yes, we approve it, and we're seen of...
Right, 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 exactly.
Auditors actually do check, but we say, we approve this, that was paid by this check number, and we...
Odd that when they're doing that, though, they're not filing, I mean, we don't have so many things going through here.
They're not filing.
Well, just when the, when the, whoever the financial, who is now, no longer here right to manage, yeah, so, but anyway, it just seems like that's a routine thing to do. Here's my invoice, here's my, my check number, here's my date, reconciling every month. I guess I'm...
I think that they have it, they just didn't provide it to us.
Oh.
And the new bookkeeping system is gonna be much, much better.
That's gonna be... That's going to be automated?
Mostly.
The invoice should show the check number.
The invoice actually gets attached to it, invoice gets scanned, it gets attached to it. And the check stub that the town keeps shows who the payer was, the payer, and what the invoice was, and invoice number and amount. And if one check is paying for multiple invoices, they're all listed. Whereas what, from the old system, you get a copy of the check stub, it has an amount, it does not have a date, doesn't say who it was made out to. There's a rubber stamp that puts the date on it.
We moved into the 23rd.
And so we noticed that on January 6th, which was the first one she did with the new year, she changed the date and the month, forgot to change the year. So it was in 2023, but it's stamped 2022, and so forth. So the new system already stuff is out of it.
Probably just, it's, it's, it's a service that we are buying, right? We don't want to stop work, so it's a service, so they're going to automatically date, so.
Oh, yeah, no, she showed me what the new stubs look like, and it's got all that stuff printed.
Yeah, 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 we don't have to go set things, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, they don't have to take pieces of paper out and scan, and scan, and scan. In fact, Taylor has already done that with all the old stuff, the first nine months of the year.
Oh, really?
Yes, so that is now all attached.
So the, so the fiscal end of the year is going to have all of this coming together?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
And then next year, we will get the names of all the trust and reserve funds corrected. So it should no longer say the library names.
I'm, I'm looking to get rid of that one that's causing us so much angst. And just concentrate on the capital reserve fund. We can spend that down. How do you close a fund? Or is that prudent to even do that?
It's quite prudent. Funds get closed by a vote of the town. So drawing it down to zero doesn't close it.
Right.
We have funds, and having the past, they have funds that will be carried for several years with a balance of zero. So it has to be a vote of the town, so just to get them valid.
Yeah, we'll see how things go, but I'll be back to talk to you about that. I would think that, that we would want to, in, in March. Let's see what happens. Maybe we can keep it open for another year. Can you close it in the same year that you're expending? Like, well, it wouldn't close in the same year. If we spent it between July 1, 2023, and June 30, 2024, but the March ballot said authority to close it on July 1, 2024. That's, people would be so confused, that's not worth, probably not the right thing to do. We should wait another year.
There is a thing about the timing of closing.
Yeah, yeah.
Which one of the two are closed?
The capital reserve. The one that requires a vote.
Okay, so those are two different, those have two purposes.
There's only one capital reserve fund.
Those are both capital reserve funds. There's the, there's the Library Capital Reserve Fund. And then there's the Lee Library Building Capital Reserve.
Library Capital Reserve. I should have used the whole, they have a copy and paste.
The purposes of those are different.
Sure.
So the library building can only be used for building. You can buy furniture, you can buy shelving, you can buy a new computer system. It's only the building. Whereas the other one, the older one.
Yeah.
You've purchased furniture, you've repaired furniture, you've purchased, I think it was a computer circulation system.
Probably, yeah.
I mean, exactly, that's the oldest one, they're close back to that way.
Okay, so we should really have, because we've got one that's ongoing.
The first one can do everything that the other one can do.
Right.
Because the first one can also use the building, it can re-roof the building, and you can paint it, you can do everything you might need to do for the building, as well as the stuff inside the building. Anything that is a capital expense related to the library can be done with the, with the Library Capital Reserve Fund. Whereas the other one can clean the building.
And the only catch there is that the agent to expend is the select board, which means basically they don't have the, they don't have the authority to do that.
They have authority to do that.
Yeah. Versus a vote.
The library trustees and the select board have to agree.
Right, right, understood.
I mean, I think, I don't think it makes sense to have two. But they, but it's, you only have two because of history. The Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund came about because of the Library Community Center. So that's what it was created for. And then it became what it is now for a change of purpose.
Okay, well, come January, we'll definitely sit down and talk and paper out of this.
There's a number of things that have been purchased with that first one, that you can't purchase.
But now we are free to spend that money without, without any restriction, technically. We continue to reform, but the, the, the Library Capital Reserve Fund, because, because.
Just the voters voting, here it is.
We're free, okay.
Then you are free to spend up to those limits for what they voted for. And you don't need permission to say whatever you want.
Which is for capital.
It, that is for any capital expense of the library.
And a both capital fund.
So, yes, the both, the both capital reserve funds. So that's, I mean, they say it's any capital expense of the library. Now, the fund is for any capital expense of the library. The voters voted it to be for renovation and addition.
On the building.
Wow.
I thought that the, the Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund was for renovation.
So. So come back to Article 9 from 2021. Oh, I'm sorry, March 9th, 2021, Article 7, to see if the town will vote and raise, see if the town will vote and raise, yeah, vote to raise and appropriate the sum not to exceed $100,000 to be used for the renovation and addition to the Lee Public Library Building, and to authorize the withdrawal of this amount from the Library Capital Reserve Fund. So even though that fund could be used for things like furniture, what the voters voted it, the $100,000 to use for that appropriation was just for renovation and addition.
Okay.
It's, it's the same as, we have a fire equipment capital reserve fund. So you can buy fire trucks, you could buy fire hose, you could buy the super fancy washing machine that washes the gear, and so forth. But when the voters vote for it, and it's, Article 8's put on the ballot, they vote to buy a fire truck. Or another year, they vote to buy self-contained breathing apparatus, and so forth. So even though the fund itself can be used for many different kinds of fire equipment, and then the voters who would vote for it, they're voting for some specific.
Paid at the first.
Correct. And that way, the voters know, this is what we're approving. I mean, I suspect the voters would feel just as good about buying a fire truck as buying breathing apparatus.
Fair, but.
But, but in theory.
Yeah, no, I understand.
The voters.
It could be very.
The voters could decide, you know, no, we don't want to buy a community vehicle for everybody on fire. So that's why the voters still have that authority to decide what's specific. And it's the same way with the Library Capital Reserve Fund. Even though that could be used for furniture, and it has in the past, the voters might decide at some future time, we don't like the, the expensive furniture.
Sure.
Or something, right? So it's, but, but that fund is what, you know, could buy lots of different kinds of things.
And, and that's only earmarked to the $100,000, so what the, the vote, the vote that just took place?
The 35?
2023? Is that as well as 35? Yes, yes, $35,000.
I think that that was, I think it was mentioned the same thing, but.
Where is that? I didn't see any purpose other than to vote it. But maybe it must be the actual wording of the word. I should try and go back and find it. Turn around, number of articles.
No, I'm just scrolling through.
One was four, but I don't know which one, I don't know which one it was. One was to appropriate more, and the other one was to withdraw. 19, four, four or 19?
Oh, $35,000, that's crazy. That one specifically is renovation. Article 15. And that one is, see, the first one was worded as up to $100,000. So we have one on $100,000. The second one specifies, example, $35,000 to be used for the renovation of the Lee Public Library. And otherwise, withdrawal of this amount from the Library Capital Reserve Fund for this purpose and renovation taxation, that wording comes out of recommendations from the DRA.
Okay, so both, so both components of the Library Capital Reserve Fund is renovation, as it sits today.
In this case, the first one is renovation and addition. And that was, and that was something that the trustees actually look at, is say, well, was that money spent on renovation and addition?
Does that have to be both?
Well.
The fact that there's an and there, does that denote that it was for both?
We didn't have a problem with it because, in fact, it was spent on both. You paid an architect to do some designs for an addition.
True.
So.
Yeah, it's the luxury area.
And you can't do, you can't do either of them without having architects and engineers involved, and we pay them for both things, so there was no, no issue. And so I guess no issue, but if you decided that you wanted $35,000 for addition, which you're not doing. It says renovation.
The town was, it was kind of a, nobody's been, uh, getting rid of all the, all the asbestos all the way.
So.
Got to get it done.
So all we need is a copy of the, you know, some contracts.
Yeah.
You know, that was, that was illegally obligated this year. In this year, make the obligation for next year in an effort to repay next year.
Yeah, it says, the date in it says that it will commence no later than six months from the signature.
And actually, once that obligation is made, it practically doesn't matter when the expenses are paid. If you think about something like a fire truck, it takes a long time to make. First, they gotta order the special body from the truck making company, and maybe they have all the fire truck stuff in there. Particularly the last one.
They're all made to spend.
Oh, yeah. You have every single piece of equipment on it.
I don't know, I thought you, I thought you were a fire truck viewer.
No, in fact, you start out with what manufacturer do you want to make the truck body? Because the fire truck, the fire truck company doesn't make the body with the frame and the engine, and so forth. That comes from the truck manufacturer.
Right.
And the fire truck, that costs like $270,000. And then that has to get delivered to the fire truck company, and then the fire truck company puts all the other stuff, like the cab, and the tanks, and the cars, and then whatever else.
That makes sense, because it's very specialized. That part of the idea comes to be.
And you lose, so every piece of that, you know, even back to what, what the truck is going to be. What engine is it going to have, what are the ratings on that, or is that another? And then you get into all the fire truck stuff, and every piece of that is, is it going to be this pump, that pump? Is it going to be controlled from both sides, if the pendulum goes on?
I suppose, and there's price points in there, so it's going forward as well.
So, so, but once you place that over, and you all get it applied, it doesn't matter.
Okay, I will be sending you the contracts this evening. No, no, I stick it before. I work for the Library. I'm going to seal the public. And then on the notice, I would use it on. Wendy, would you like to second that motion?
I second it.
Oh, great, okay. And then we'll call. Please, we'll call, just, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Great. Any other business, any other issues? Um, move to adjourn. Move to adjourn? All in favor, aye? That's what I thought, and then I get mixed reviews on that. Does remember Carrie used to always do that, and then somebody said you can't do that, and then it's been so confusing.
You can adjourn.
All right, that's what I will do from now.
You need your glasses case to be Carrie.
I need to discuss what I'm going to do and have it as a beverage. Have a great night, you two.
Bye.
Carrie is in a state of deep mourning, his little dog, that Carrie loved more than just about anything. I think that.
I think they had to put it down.
They had to put it down, and unfortunately, Carrie had spent an incredible amount of money trying to get it to live.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, he was telling me how, I was bunged up with the Market Basket in the parking lot, and he was telling me his episode that he went to Market Basket, and he went to use the restroom, and then came out again, and he's raised my cell phone. So I figured he left it in the restroom, no, he didn't leave it in the restroom. So he's figuring, oh, jeez, where did I lose it? So he goes back home and can't find it there. So he says, I must have dropped it in Market Basket, so I'll go back to Market Basket. In the interim, when he was going to Market, he's in Market Basket, his phone rings, it's in his pocket.
Oh, God.
And I said, Carrie, it sounds like a senior moment. Yes, that was a senior moment. But he was so embarrassed, he was like walking in there, he's going ready to contact the clerk to Christmas to see if anyone picked up his phone, and his phone rang, says.
Did you check your pockets, sir?
Have a great night, everybody. You too. Come to me, I don't have a.
Ms. Cuddy didn't hand it to me.
Oh, okay.